Good evening. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll please.
Rhodes? Here. Spinks? Here. Coche?
Here.
Nezah? Janutus?
Here.
Fluhort?
Here.
Son?
Here.
I have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Nezaker tonight by Rhodes, second by Saunders. Call the roll please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhort?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Council, you have the minutes of the work session of February 19, 2019. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Janutus, second by Spinks. Call the roll please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhort?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of February 19, 2019. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Rhodes, second by Saunders. Call the roll please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhort?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And under old business, ordinance number 9676-19. An ordinance, ordinance number 9676-19, adopting the credit card use policy for the city of Bedford declaring an emergency. It's our wish to put that on second reading. Motion for such by Fluhort, second by Spinks. Call the roll please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhort?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9677-19. Making ordinance number 6136-90 regarding section 151.08 AC entitled Conversation for All the Work of the City in Declaring Emergency. And it's our wish to do a second reading on that. Motion for such by Janutus, second by Fluhort. Call the roll please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhort?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Before we get into our reports, I just wanted to publicly thank Wally for his work with the Hawthorne Valley Youth Council. We got a very nice email from Deb Lekki, the coordinator of that program. Said the kids are enjoying you being there and you're representing our city quite well. So we do appreciate that. Well, those are good kids, you know, I tell you. I always say, if our best and brightest could enter into public service, we would all be better off. And I think we're seeing some outstanding students that have an interest in that, or interest in government. I think that's refreshing and good. Thank you. Mr. Malice?
Thank you, Mayor. Few items I did want to mention. The first energy has been out repairing the streetlights that were put in. I mentioned at the last meeting that they are moving through town. There was quite an extensive list that they're working off of. If you see these streetlights with the police caution tape around them, those are the ones that we marked with that tape so it'll be easier for them to find once they were out. So we'll continue to monitor it and hopefully it gets, they can move through as quickly as possible. We did receive another grant through the county, through the preventative maintenance program. We used these funds last year to perform some crack sealing on areas of Rockside and Columbus. We received the same grant, it was about $33,000, and it'll go towards the completion of that project. We can only get through a portion of those streets, they're very long. This will help us complete that. So that's another grant that we did get, which is great. We've also received the CDSG grant for $50,000 that we applied for, that we were hoping would be successful, which we were. And that'll go towards initiating the wayfinding and signage project to help start that program. Our committee that's been working on it, Sean Francis, Aaron Fatch, and Jen Kuzma, have been meeting with Guide Studio, who's the company that's worked with some of the other communities, Kent, University Circle, Lakewood. And they're going through the design process now, so once we get some renderings, we'll be presenting those to council. The idea is to use this $50,000 as a start. And we're also gonna have some other funds that'll be available to kick off the project. This'll include, in not necessarily this order, but gateway signs, wayfinding signs, signage to highlight some of our, you know, the assets like the historic district, the metro parks, Bay of Duck Park, things like that. So that's moving along. And generally, a great job putting that grant together and being successful. I spoke to the Ohio BMV last week. They're moving along much sooner than we anticipated. We are gonna be activating the traffic lights at Rockside, as well as up by Northfield near Meadowbrook. They're gonna be moving into their location the week of March 12th. So it's only about next week at that site, should everything go well. So they're excited to get up there. And then I know the asbestos, the asbestos information for the old Huntington Bank was being reviewed. And there's a certain timeline that Mazda needs to wait from when they get that to when they can actually tear that down. But that's progressing as well, so moving along regarding those. Those of you that, not many. For those of you that didn't see, Xalaya made a, Xalaya, thank you. They pronounce it Xalaya now. They had a press release a couple weeks ago, and they announced that they got FDA approval for a new drug. It's a bag drug, not in the vials, but it will be in the bag system. That'll be in the facility closest to Northfield Road. And it's been involved 60, roughly $60 million of investment for construction. And the hope is, or not the hope, they're under a time crunch, and they wanna start producing that in, I believe, the end of 2021. So there's gonna be a lot of activity up there that's good for Bedford, will mean jobs. So, you know, the good news is they continue to grow, and they're committed to our city and northeast Ohio. So, good news. And then Ellenwood is back open, the staff has relocated, they backed down to the center. They left the hall last week, so they are up and running. And we're also gonna be getting information out. If you recall, last year, we did a lot of modification to some of our rules, regulations, policies, building usage. And we'll now be getting that information out now that we are taking applications for the facility. So kudos to Dan and Rick, and some of the guys at Service Department, and some of the staff up here, for being patient, and most importantly, the community. I think when you walk in there, you'll see, there's still some tweaks to be done. Obviously, some of it was funded through grants, a lot of it was done in-house. And I think when you go inside, it's a welcoming, clean, professional-looking space. And we're gonna continue to make some additional improvements in some of the other rooms as we go. So, all done.
And I believe you're gonna plan some kind of open house?
Yeah.
Later this spring?
Yeah.
Mr. Montel?
I just thank y'all for coming, and just called outside, so I won't bore you with the hint. Everything I have to say, is have a good night. I could be boring about the law.
Mr. Gambozy?
Yes, just a couple items. On the online tax system everybody filing, don't forget to send in your paperwork to W2s, the 1099s. We're getting a nice trickle coming back. Last time I looked, we had 168, so I'm sure we're above that, probably above the 200 American people using it right now, I'm sure, easily. But it's climbing as we go, and that'll get more and more as everybody gets used to using the system. But don't forget to include all your paperwork this year and copy the tax return. File on time. The penalties are very stiff for not filing on time. State, those are state mandated penalties. Penalty interest is very high. You can jump a dollar fifty out in a very short period of time. So make sure those filings are good and you pay the taxes due. That's all I have at this point.
Thank you. Mrs. Rhodes?
Hello, everyone, thank you for coming. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who participated in our first First Friday. It went very well. We had several families join us in the downtown for our student art walk. Our students put on some really spectacular pieces of artwork. People enjoyed it very much. We also created a community piece of artwork that we're hoping to have up in the storefront window, hopefully by tomorrow. So stop into our downtown to see that piece of art. Our next First Friday will be April 5th, and we'd like to see all of our residents stopping down. Its theme will be the environment. Again, this is just a community gathering, it's not so much an event, it's just a reason to visit our downtown. We'll be providing music, some free food, and activities for families and kids. I'd also like to thank everyone who showed up for our Puka pickup. Wall too, or Wally showed up, and I appreciate you coming out to support us. So our next Puka pickup will be the first Saturday in April. Puka pickups, we are starting them in downtown. There has been some interest in moving them to various locations around the city, but for right now, we're focusing on the downtown area. And basically, we all come together and we clean up the area. And it's been working out very well. I'd also like to let everyone know that we are always seeking volunteers for the Bedford Downtown Alliance, and that anyone who volunteers with us, we are a 501(c)(3), so those hours do count towards any volunteer requirements that you may have for students at school or any other organizations such as Boy Scouts or even community service. So please contact us if you have any interest in volunteering with us. That's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks?
Good evening, everybody. Mike, I'd like to give a big thank you to the Service Department. Bad storm that we had last Sunday, and I know, I hear this all the time, oh, well, it's their job. Well, it is their job, but it's still, I think it's very important to give them thank you. We had a rather large tree, an oak tree, which so many of them are in our city. Being known as a tree city, we have a lot of trees that badly need to be taken down, and the storm did a few of them for us. This literally was on the tree line, it missed the front porch of this house, and the window was narrowed for just a few inches. How it did not break, go through a window or take down the porch, I do not know. I literally had to crawl under the limbs to get to the poor guy at the front door to tell him that we were gonna take care of it, and that was on a Sunday, and you can't even tell a tree was ever there. They did such a great job of cleaning it up and getting it out of there. I just think, I personally wanted to thank them, and the young man, spoke to him day before yesterday, and he was very appreciative of it, because they literally could not get out their front door. They had to go around the side because the tree was blocking everything. We were fairly lucky, I did have another one down. And I wanted to ask you that, and to ask you that earlier, but it was in their backyard. It was on the corner of Center. This is a tricky situation I did have, it's a runner, and they did call in NASCAP and tell them it was the landlord's responsibility. Huge tree in the backyard, you can see it when you turn on the light. The roots are massive, and it looked like it just, you know. So they have this huge, huge tree. It is, it makes the one that was down on Thames look small, like a twig. It's very large. So I was meant to tell you that earlier, but it's just. But I think, like I said, again, I want to thank them for that removal of that, a lot of limbs and stuff. There was a lot of debris, and it was taken care of pretty quickly. So I want to give it kudos for doing a well, good job. Talking about things changing and everything, I also want to talk to, if you have driven down Rockside, to what the auto mall is doing, the Hyundai building is real close to being done. It looks absolutely phenomenal. Volvo looks really, really good, the building. But the U-Haul building, at first, I was fussing, I did not like it, it was looking harmless. It was where the old Tim Wally was, and I was like, not happy. It was looking really, really rough. Well, it's not looking rough anymore. They have done, they've finally, and the guy sure, but he goes, lady, I promise you, just give him a couple weeks, it's gonna look really good. And he did let me down, and they're still, they have more things coming up, and he says, it's really, because it's off the road, but you don't really notice it when you're going towards it, but when you're coming the other way, you see it. You saw it when it was deplorable, and it looks really nice, I'm really impressed with it. And he said, they're not done yet, they still have a few things.
Yeah, they're, I think they're in about half of it.
Yeah?
Half of it's done. They still have another half to do, and they're working to relocate the rest of the items down from the Broadway site to the Rockside site. But yeah, they're gonna be expanding and offering more at the new location.
I was impressed with that, so I just wanted to kind of, it's nice to see things are going a little forward on Rockside, because it has looked so horrible at the other end for so long. Hopefully, someday that will, that will look up and feel a little bit better. It's, it looks worse on your side with the word Wally than it does mine. Just joking. Yeah, the worst part of it. Also IHOP, just put up brand new signs, they just did some remodeling, it looks good there. That's your award, giving you kudos on it, it looks good. This weekend had the Dr. Seuss birthday celebration at the church. And something else that's looking really nice is our community room at the Historical Society and the Old Church. New carpet in, walls are painted, it looks good. And got a lot of really exciting things coming up that are gonna be going on there. So if you have not got your ticket for the reverse raffle, Debbie Grubbs is here tonight. She, you can get them from her, that's coming up next weekend. You will not be able to get the tickets for the reverse raffle dinner. You will not be able to get them at the door. You want to see this young lady tonight. You do not want to miss this event, because it helps us, of course, we know the Historical Society, that building, our building is very, very old. And during the windstorm, we had a window blowout. Of course, windows are very old. So these fundraisers are to do improvements like that. So we need you, we need you to support these things. So see Debbie after this, it's a great event. I already got my ticket, so cancel. It's the 16th, it is March 16th. So if you have not got your ticket, make sure you get it for this event. You can do just the dinner only, there will be the reverse raffle, there'll be a solid auction, live auction, all kinds of stuff going on. So it's an event that you do not want to miss. End report.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus?
Thank you. I think I'm gonna take the law director's lead and not warn anyone, but. Just, I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you. Mr. Fluhort? Let's see, now I completely forgot what I was gonna say. Mike, talking about the tree limbs and everything, I know I emailed you, I got a lot of people putting on the tree line. Are we getting those picked up? We got the chipper coming out at all?
I talked to the service, the chipper technically doesn't come out until April, but with the storm, they were going around trying to collect some of the items, so I did tell them about that.
Yeah, because I noticed even more, almost every street up and down, it has at least two or three houses that has tree limbs on the front yard. So now I know what to tell them. If they haven't been picked up, I'll let them know that they'll get out there, so they don't have to worry about it. And I have a report from the school board, or the school district. I meet with Dr. Selico every couple months, got some good news for you and some bad news. The good news is there's not gonna be a levy on this year's ballot. Bad news is it'll be on 2020. So, and there'll be a bond issue in 2022. So they don't want to do the levy and the bond issue back to back, but by then, they'll be definitely needing some more money for the bond issues for buildings. It has nothing to do with the running the school. The levies is what money goes towards keeping the, you know, paying the teachers and everybody and everything else. But right now, they're pretty well set, they didn't need to do it this year. So they're holding off till 2020, so when there'll be the presidential election, they'll get more people out. So that's their plans. End report. Thank you. Mr. Saunders?
I get to be last, Paul is not here. Anyway, a couple quick things. I've got my ticket to the Historical Society, so we've got at least both ends covered. But a quick thing here, I know we're, we've planned our street improvement projects already, but just to reiterate the fact that some of our concrete streets, like Jefferson, Elm, and Nordham, are in very poor shape, and before we get to the point where we're gonna have to actually replace all the concrete in those streets, we're gonna have to do something with them eventually here, because they're getting to the point where they're gonna turn into powder, and we're not even gonna be able to overlay, repair, and overlay. So I just bring that up, I do periodically, so. The other thing is, is now that we have a restaurant going in on the corner of Columbus and Northfield, it might be nice if we could get somebody from our police department to keep an eye on that intersection. For the last four days that I've gone in there, there's been a minimum of three cars, when I've been at the light, that run that light. And they're not running it yellow, they're running it red. People just speed up and fly through that intersection. In fact, the other day, I already made the turn, because the light had turned red, and somebody still came through the intersection after me, after I had made the turn. People are running that light, it's gonna be one heck of an accident one of these days. So we need to start doing some control on that signal. Speaking of lights, you mentioned the fact that they're gonna reactivate the signals at Meadowbrook. Did anybody do a warranty process to make sure there's enough traffic to reactivate those two signals? Because reactivating those two signals without them being timed to do that same thing at the Northfield and Rockside intersection is gonna create a hazard in its own right. If there isn't enough traffic there in those signals, and actually, we're, for the most part, there because of Walmart, which generated a lot of traffic, the BMV isn't gonna generate that much traffic. Those lights may become a hazard in their own right. So normally, when you reactivate, you do a warrant to make sure there's enough traffic there and to warrant those signals to be reactivated. I just bring that up. So at the same time, like I said, they should be timed with that intersection signal so that it doesn't create a problem, because we still have the problem on 271, and there's a lot of traffic that goes on Northfield Road on days like Sunday, when 271 was actually closed, and they moved all the traffic off. So I know, and I keep saying that they're not, they haven't increased any traffic on Broadway or Northfield because of the 271 construction, but everybody knows that's a laugher. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple items. One of the officials from Garfield Heights asked me to pass along if anybody have any youth that would like to play hockey. They have the big hockey rink over there. They're looking for kids from, I think it's like eight to 14, somewhere in that range, for their hockey league, which starts in August. So if you know anybody that likes to play hockey, there's a good opportunity. And, you know, they do partake in some of our recreation, baseball and stuff, and so they're opening this up to our kids if they want to go over and play hockey there, so. What you can do is call Garfield Heights, ask for their department, and they can give you more information. It's a good thing. And, you know, we have that, the governor has proposed the increase in the gas tax in 18 cents a gallon. But I would encourage everybody, if you can, call your state senator, state rep, Kenny Uco or Juanita Brent, tell them to pass it. Yeah, 18 cents more, I don't know, it's maybe three, four dollars more for a full tank of gas, but what it'll get out of it is tremendous. I was trying to look up the numbers. Just for our city, I think it's around, almost $800,000 that could generate for us, put into our roads, which would be terrific, so. There's a direct benefit out of that tax. It's not just going out to the governor so he can spend more money, but it'll have a huge impact on our city if we can get that kind of money. Whether it'll end up at 18 cents is still being debated by the politicians down in Columbus, but whatever, it's gonna be significant. And I think we really need it. It's been a long time since we've had a gas increase. Not that I like to raise taxes or promote that, but the value of it will be tremendous to our city.
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment, add onto that. The cost for the average driver is one new tire per year. So it's not really all that much, and it is sorely needed throughout the state. So how many people have been complaining that they've blown tires out on some of these conditions in the roads? Well, the cost of one tire per year is basically what it's gonna cost you in the increase. Thank you.
Yep, that's, be very valuable, so. Enough of that, let's move on. Ordinance number 9678-19. A making ordinance number 9653-18, making additional appropriations for current expenditures of the city of Bedford during the year 2019 in declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension by Rhodes, second by Saunders. Call the roll please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhort?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Spinks, second by Janutus. Frank?
Yeah, first of all, just the amendment was to the department number in the first, in the general fund. We're gonna have, it's a transfer out, and that's the service department, to the fire equipment fund, the first I'll need that.
That's already been corrected.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we're aware of that. Basically, this ordinance was put together to allow for the reappropriations of funds that were not utilized last year from the grants. So it's the funds that were left over, and we're re-appropriating those for this year. We also have the new SEAL grant for 2019, and moving on to diversion. We also have the, all the prior grants that we had last year. And at this point, we've also allowed for $150,000 of fixing the valves in the water department G.I.A. system, things of that nature that we will be working on, and allowing the law enforcement agency fund to distribute its funds that it has on hand. That's what we have in that way.
Okay, thank you. Call the roll please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhort?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9679-19. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to contract with LPB Productions, Inc. for videotaping services for council meetings and the state of the city address in declaring an emergency. We will put this on first reading for now. I have a motion for such, and Spinks, second by Janutus. Call the roll please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhort?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Resolution number 2532-19. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Oak Group, Inc. for plan examiner services in declaring an emergency. And we want to do this also on first reading, I have a motion for such, by Saunders, second by Rhodes. This is just so we'll have a second plans examiner that the local department will be able to use. We have one now that's very good. We have one now that's very good, sometimes they get a little tied up, and this could speed up some plans reviews, and, but I think in anticipation, a lot of the building that's going to go around here, we don't want to slow up any of these new projects that are on the books and keep things moving, so that's what that's about. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes? Yes. Spinks? Yes. Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And now we come to hearing of citizens, if you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your comment.
Debbie Gro, 260 Dever Lane, and I just wanted to remind everyone again about the Bedford Historical Society Reverse Raffle that is in just under two weeks on March sixteenth. The theme is Flying to the Moon, we'll have a great time. The grand prize is fifteen hundred dollars. I do have tickets available if you want, and I will need them this week if you want to reserve for dinner. Costs are for ninety dollars for two dinners and one big board ticket, sixty dollars for one dinner and one big board ticket, or if you just want to come for the dinner, that's thirty-five dollars, or if you're unable to attend the dinner, you can also buy a big board ticket for thirty-five dollars, or three for a hundred. I have them tonight, we have them at the museum, and we're open tomorrow from ten to four, we're also open Thursday, ten to four, and Wednesday, we're open two to eight p.m., so if you can't come until after work, that would be a good time. You can contact us there either, the phone number is four four zero two three two zero seven nine six, or museum@bedfordohiohistory.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
Me can say something.
Sitting, now, can I have a motion for, German, by Spinks, second by Blue Hardy? Call the roll, please.
Rhodes? Yes. Spinks? Yes. Coche?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Blue Hardy?
Yes.
Saunders?